By Auntie Jessie. The meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held at the Na'alehu Community Center, 955635 Kamalahoah Highway, Na'alehu, Hawaii. I'm Kali Watson, Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and today's date is Monday, September 17, 2023, and the time is 3:30, or 4:30, no, 3:30, excuse me. Yeah, can you please call the roll?
Noting the excuse, the absence of Commissioners Awol, Helm, and Nomu. Commissioner Freitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalakini.
Aye.
Commissioner Konea Kua.
Aye.
Commissioner Marfil.
Aye.
Commissioner Nevis.
Aye.
And Chair Watson.
Aye.
Six members present, we have a forum.
Okay, today's meeting is divided into... Second thought, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
There's...
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Today's meeting is divided into three parts. DHHL updates, updates from community associations, then finding the public testimony on agendaized items. The items for information, well, first of all, I'd like to start off by welcoming you all to this community meeting. It's our opportunity, not only to share what we're doing at the department, but also to find out some of the issues that you have, maybe share some of the solutions we have regarding what we're doing at the department. This is a new administration. I feel very privileged to have the opportunity to work with the homesteading program. As most of you know, we recently received about $600 million under Act 279 in 2022. So we're using that money, the commission has approved about 20 little, over 20 projects that we're moving forward throughout the state, including on this island. There's some exciting times, especially for people on the waitlist. We're also using the money to improve certain infrastructure so we can start to move people off the waitlist. As well as, besides that, you know, one of the things I'd like to do is not just build vertical construction housing, but we're also looking at some of these large areas, especially on the big island, that's just sitting vacant. And one of the things I would like to do is make awards, get them out of our inventory. They don't belong in our inventory, they belong with the beneficiaries so they can use them. But we're going to be very aggressive, not only in building homesteads for residential, but we're also looking at pastoral as well as ag. As some of you are aware, we recently tried a new approach in Paneva, which is subsistence ag lots, where we issued out half-acre lots. And in addition to that, it was for people off the ag waiting list. With that award, they got a larger piece of property, they can grow food and crops subsistence-wise, feed their families as well as feed your neighbors. We also brought in some lenders, as well as people to educate regarding the different crops that could be grown. We are, we brought in some lenders, as well as contractor, to kind of talk about building a house. One of the things that is an option to awardee for ag-lease is the ability to build a house. And with a larger lot, you know, you can build a bigger house, so you can house your ohana. That's kind of a new approach, and I think rather than making out these large agricultural awards, we're trying to be a little bit more responsive, so we've looked at some of the lands here in Paneva, as well as Keokah and some other sites. So that's one of the new approaches, I think, that is a lot more viable and usable, but also allows us to make more awards. So that's an exciting time in our program that I would care to share with you. But enough of my talking. What I'd like to do is have some of my staff come up to give updates relative to your specific community. So we'll start off with Andrew, Andrew Choi, from our planning office.
Ohaha Commissioners, item G1 for... Item G1 for information only. We're going to give a status update on the department's implementation of plans related to the Ka'ulu region. With me today, I'd like to introduce Lee Makaila, who is the Hawaii Island Planner for the department. She will give part of the presentation.
Aloha Commissioners and community. Next slide. Here we have the DHHL Planning System. The first tier is the General Plan, which was most recently updated in 2022. This is the guiding policies for all of the plans that are within the DHHL Planning System. Second tier includes strategic program plans, as well as island plans, including the Hawaii Island Plan. The island plan for this island was last updated in 2002, with an amendment for West Hawaii in 2009. We are currently beginning an update to the Hawaii Island Plan. I'll mention that a little bit more in the presentation. The third tier includes development plans, those are for vacant lots and regional plans. Regional plans are for the areas that have homestead communities and developed areas. Regional plans work primarily with our beneficiary communities and help to identify priority projects in each of the regions. Next slide. For the Hawaii Island Plan, you can see the graphic on the left identifies the different regions and all of the land holdings for Hawaii Island. Again, this is the plan that we are in the process of updating. We anticipate it will take about 24 months total to update this plan, and there are different components to the plan itself, but one major component is updating the land use designations. One particular change is in the update to the General Plan. General agriculture as a land use designation was removed as a category. So all lands currently designated as general agriculture will need to be re-designated to a different land use designation within the DHHL Land Use Designation System. Those categories are articulated in the General Plan. You can see, specific to Ka'ulu, there are land holdings here in Wailau, Waiohineu, and also Kama'oah and Pu'u'e'o. And on the very bottom, you can see Special District at Kalai. Next slide. In the Ka'ulu Regional Plan, the last update for that was 2012. So it is due for an update. These are the top five priority projects that were identified as a part of that planning process, and I'm going to cover those in a little bit more detail. Next slide. One of the top priorities was to support development of affordable homestead alternatives in Ka'ulu. Next slide. In 2021, during the summertime, Discovery Harbor Lot offerings were made. DHHL offered a total of 38 vacant lots in Discovery Harbor, and beneficiaries had the opportunity to connect with construction companies and also habitat for them. Next slide. Another priority project was to obtain additional water for homestead lots. Next slide. Here you can see the Ka'ulu Water System. This is to serve the Kama'oah and Pu'u'e'o land on South Point, off of South Point Road. Currently, there are 25 homestead pastoral lessees, and the surrounding area is part of general agriculture and has primarily pastoral uses. For some years, a couple decades, there was actually no water available to these pastoral lessees. We are in Phase 1 of an update to this water system that will provide a water tank and a fill station for the lessees in this area. There are additional phases, that there's one additional phase that's planned out and potential for future phases as well, that might offer water to each of the lots. But the, this phase will offer the refill station, which you can see off of South Point Road where we went today. Next slide. One of the priority projects was championed by the Homestead Association and the beneficiaries in the area, which was to pursue additional lands for agricultural leases in the Waiohineu area. Next slide. You can see the green parcel called out here on the map. These lands were formerly a part of DLNR, Dofa Lands, and these were identified as suitable lands for agricultural purposes. With the championing of the Homestead Association in partnership with DLNR, DHHL was able to have these lands acquired through executive order of the governor. One challenge for these lands is that they, until the title is transferred over, they are not formally a part of the Hawaiian Homeland's land inventory and thereby not suitable for a 99-year homestead lease. At this time, there's a parcel that has been leased to the Homestead Association for agricultural use. Next slide. You can see the detailed Waiohineu lands, existing Waiohineu lands in pink as a part of DHHL, and the green area is the portion for acquisition. Next slide. This kind of covers the timeline of events in the acquisition of this parcel. So in partnership with DLNR, the Board of Land and Natural Resources, approved the parcel being transferred to the department, and that took place in 2018. There was some due diligence that took place, and ultimately, the legislature consented to the executive order in May of 2021. At present, there's just the agricultural portion, about five acres, that's being utilized by the Homestead Association, and one other ROE which I'll mention in. So next slide. This is the portion that's utilized by the Hawaiian Homelands Association. They have a pilot project for agriculture. That right-of-entry permit was executed in May of 2022. Next slide. Earlier this year, there was a request made by a nonprofit based here in Ka'ulu, Hana Laulima Lahui'ou Ka'ulu. They requested a 10, approximately 10-acre parcel of those Waiohineu lands that's along the highway for their project, which is the Ka'ulu Hawaiian Cultural Community Center, which includes agricultural programs. They have been in existence for some time and have been serving the Ka'ulu community, offering different programs to keiki and also kupuna programs as well. The right-of-entry was granted to them in May of this year, in a decision by this commission, and they are currently waiting, patiently, for the execution of the ROE. This particular ROE is for due diligence studies, so all of the environmental reviews and other reviews that are necessary for them to pursue the construction of the Ka'ulu Cultural Center. Next slide. Another priority from the regional plan is the protection and preservation of cultural sites and natural resources in Kama'oah and Kalai, South Point. I'm going to turn this over to Andrew to discuss.
Next slide. So Commissioners, we had a very, very brief field trip to Kalai this afternoon. I wish we had more time. I think we only got to see the very tip of the area down there. But I'm glad that we did get to go down there. You can kind of get a better understanding of the environment and some of the challenges that we do face. In 2016, this commission approved the South Point Management Plan. The plan identified five priority management focuses. Well, it says six up there, but it's really five. Restore and protect important cultural sites and natural resources within the department's property. Manage vehicular access. I know when you even went down there, you noticed a lot of cars parked along the sides of the road. They really aren't permitted to be there. Provide sanitary amenities and signage at South Point. Institute a parking fee for South Point. Plan, design, and construct a service road and pedestrian path to Mahanabei or Greensands Beach, which is one of the primary attractions in, on Hawaiian homelands in South Point. And then provide training and technical assistance to local people to become legal business entities on Hawaiian homelands. However, the main near-term priority for the department has been to try to regain site control and better manage vehicular access. We've tried, and I'll go through some of the things that we've tried to implement to manage vehicular access, but ultimately, from what you've seen today, we've been unsuccessful in fully managing vehicular access at South Point. Next slide. We didn't get to go into the region that much today, but there are vehicular activities that threaten the natural resources down there. Off-road ATVs, trucks, tour operations that continue to erode the landscape down there. Next slide. This is one of the wahipana in South Point, known by many as Palahemo. I'm not going to go into the detail of how it is special, but just know that it is very dear and special to many who live in Ka'ulu and who have been longtime residents of Ka'ulu. The picture to the right kind of illustrates some of the effects of these unapproved vehicular accesses to South Point and the erosion that it causes to Palahemo. Next slide. Not only is it, is the activity down at South Point a threat to the cultural resources, it is also a liability to the trust. These, there are dangerous activities that sometime occur at South Point, like diving off the cliff by the fish hoist that we visited earlier this afternoon. And also, when folks travel to Greensands Beach in off-road vehicles with no controlled access, there are things that happen that aren't, that are a high risk to the department and the trust. Next slide. And also, there, there's also a sentiment from Ka'ulu folks that a lot of people from outside Ka'ulu come down and use Ka'ulu as, or use South Point as a recreational area without giving back and malama, taking care of the place. Also, you may have seen some tourist cars down there. Today's Sunday, so there might not have been the peak of tourist season, but the tourism industry greatly benefits from the resources and sites at South Point. However, the department doesn't really see some of those benefits. In fact, it has become a detriment. So there is opportunity for the department and our beneficiaries to realize some, or utilize some of the interest from tourists in South Point for the department and our beneficiaries betterment. Next slide. So again, these are the five priority management focuses in the South Point Management Plan. But like I said before, the primary barrier to better management is getting a handle on the unauthorized vehicular access down there. So next slide. So these are some of the attempts that we've tried to make in the past since the adoption of the South Point Management Plan. Unfortunately, they've had minimal success. So we did try to put a cement barrier down there to block it, but shortly after we put this cement barrier down there, it was removed because we just simply don't have site presence down there. We don't have people to monitor there on a more frequent basis. We tried to solicit the services of security guards in 2019 and 2020. Unfortunately, for the amount that the department had budgeted, we did not attract much interest in security guard services to help establish more department presence down there. The department started to initiate conversations with the Hawaii County Police Department to see if they were willing to hire a special duty officer that the department would pay for and fund. But Hawaii County, due to their shortage in manpower, police, on the police force, respectfully declined entering into a partnership with the department. So we are, we know that we have limited resources, especially in terms of staffing. We have one very wonderful land agent who is kind of the natural resource manager for the entire state, even though his kuleana is really aina mauna specifically, but he's extended himself to many other areas across the state. So we, we do face challenges, and we are looking to partner with other entities outside of the department to help us with those challenges. Next slide. One of the things that the department has been working on recently with regards to South Point and Pu'u'uli'i, which is a burial mound that unfortunately, we didn't have a chance to go take a closer look at, but it is a known place where Ivi kupuna have... It is a known place where we know that there are Ivi kupuna there. And we know that with the department's current staffing levels, we can't do as good a job as we need to, to take care of this place. So we've been looking at opportunities to partner with interested community groups or community members willing to partner with the department to help malama this wahipana. Next slide. So the department contracted with Noho Papa, which is a native Hawaiian-owned archaeological firm, to develop standard operating procedures and how the department can establish community stewardship agreements to malama Pu'u'uli'i, and at the same time comply with state law and federal law that are related to burials. So with that, I'd like to ask Kelly Uleoka from Noho Papa to kind of give a brief overview of the work that she has been, she and Noho Papa have been doing with the Ka'ulu community and the department.
Hello, my kako. My name is Kelly Lihua Keopuna Uoka. Aloha, Andrew, for the introduction. I'm the founder and principal investigator at Noho Papa Hawaii, and like Andrew said, we're a native Hawaiian-owned and operated cultural resource management firm that do work and hunt throughout the Pai'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'a'. However, I'm from Hakalau, Hawaii, and had a beautiful drive over here from Hilo this afternoon. I'm just really honored to be in this space and just want to acknowledge, first and foremost, the aina of Ka'ulu and the beautiful Kai'ulu who has been malamang all of the special places in Ka'ulu for generations. So we've been really honored to partner with DHHL on this really unique kind of proactive project that has four main components that I'll share a little bit about each. But it was really the kahe'a of the community that stemmed a lot of this. It's really unfortunate you guys weren't able to visit Pu'u'uli'i and just feel our kupuna there and feel the mana of that place. You know, we learned about Pu'u'uli'i when I was in high school and college, getting my archaeology degree as one of those famous places, is one of the first, you know, sites that the Polynesian navigators came from Kahiki, and of course, a burial place of our a'li'i. And you can just feel it there, but you can also feel and see the pain that that wahipana is in and the pain that the Kai'ulu feel, the community feel in knowing each time a kupuna, an Ivi kupuna are uncovered, whether it be from storm erosion and the waves because of sea level rise and climate change, or the human impacts, you know, from the vehicular access and people just not caring for that place and not maybe understanding what's there. So the purpose of my presentation today is just to share a little bit about those projects. These, these projects were pretty complex and they're all very interrelated. We just submitted a couple of the draft reports to DHHL, so hopefully you guys, if you have more interest, you can review those as well. But this was really, again, a group effort, you know, led by the kahe'a from the community with some great partnerships with Andrew and Ku'uli'i with DHHL, with our Noho Papa Hawaii team. And we brought on a legal expert, Malia Okutagawa, which you guys might be familiar with. She wrote the primer on Ivi kupuna, so very well-versed in Ivi kupuna law. So a little bit of background, like I mentioned, oh, sorry, just last one. The kahe'a came from the community. These events were negatively impacting the Ivi kupuna and mo'ipu at Pu'u'uli'i. So the Ka'ulu lineal descendants and culture descendants really desired a resolution. And DHHL commissioned us to establish those state and federal regulatory pathways, as well as DHHL's regulatory kuleana and options for facilitating and supporting community-based stewardship of Ivi kupuna at Pu'u'uli'i. And again, this was very proactive. This wasn't triggered by any development or any big changes or proposals at this time. So, next slide, please. The scope of work, again, is a suite of four primary tasks, which I'll get into. But the purpose right there was really to help create that, that process and pathway for ohanas and community, the malama Ivi kupuna, and making sure that DHHL is in compliance with state and federal rules and regulations. So the first task was a literature review, field inspection, and conditions assessment. Secondly, was this internal DHHL standard operating procedures that Andrew mentioned. Third was the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Plan of Action, which we worked closely with Malia Okutagawa. And then lastly, is a memorandum of agreement we are working with, with DHHL and the State Historic Preservation Division. The project started in 2021, and it's wrapping up in the next few months. Next slide, please. Oh, and part of, part of all of those pathways and tasks, we worked really closely and consulted with the community members that who have been malamang Ivi kupuna at Pu'u'uli'i for generations. So the first component was the literature review, field inspections, and condition assessment. And the purpose of this task was to really generate baseline information to help better inform the management and stewardship of Pu'u'uli'i, to officially establish boundaries to help with that management, and to record any previously recorded or new cultural resources or wahikupuna within Pu'u'uli'i. The results, we were able to establish those boundaries. You can see them kind of faintly there, the blue outline. So that's what we considered with, along with consultation with the community, that those would be the project area boundaries, specifically for Pu'u'uli'i. We did record three new wahikupuna at Pu'u'uli'i, which better supports their protection and preservation, two previously identified burials, and one hearth. So the recommendations from this report were to take immediate action to mitigate impacts of natural erosion at Pu'u'uli'i, to preserve kupuna in place as, as much as possible or as feasibly possible, to treat and protect the area as a burial preserve, and then to integrate community mana'o and standard operating procedures and in every action taken at Pu'u'uli'i in the future. Next slide, please. The standard operating procedures are these kind of handout or manual for DHHL to clarify your folks' role with the state and federal regulatory context obligations and to identify specific pathways to empower the community to malama Ivi kupuna at Pu'u'uli'i. So the results really were that in consultation with SHPD, DHHL's Attorney General, legal experts, as well as SHPD, to establish DHHL's regulatory pathways and obligations. And those include these different federal and state rules, HRS Chapter 6E, Natural History. these different federal and state rules, HRS Chapter 6E, Natural Historic Preservation Act, NAGPRA, the American Indian Religious Freedom Act, and then Archaeological Resources Protection Act. And these regulatory pathways, what's really important to note here is that these regulatory pathways to empower the Ka'ou community to malama Ivi kupuna at Puuli are potentially applicable to other DHHL land holdings around the Paiaina. Next slide, please. So the NAGPRA Plan of Action, so that the purpose of this document was to create an agreement or a plan of action between DHHL and the Ka'ou community to make sure that the Ka'ou community can continue to malama the Ivi of their kupuna. And a plan where DHHL agrees to fulfill both their regulatory obligations under NAGPRA, as well as support the culturally appropriate approaches of caring for kupuna that were identified specifically by the descendants, cultural Nani descendants at Puuli. So it really details DHHL's facilitation and support of this community-driven process. And it applies only to those Ivi kupuna exposed and negatively impacted by shoreline erosion and storm events. It also establishes in the best interest of the Ivi kupuna standard that Malia Okutagawa worked really hard on. And this ensures that community-led culturally appropriate treatment of Ivi kupuna. It's the ideal threshold of standards for the culturally appropriate treatment of Ivi kupuna. And it empowers the community to take direct and proactive actions to malama Ivi kupuna that are culturally appropriate and for the best for the Ivi kupuna themselves. And the last task in our suite of kuliana is this memorandum of agreement between the department and the State Historic Preservation Division. And this details the regulatory roles of both parties and the kuliana of both DHHL and SHPD in cooperation with the Ka'ou community for the care of naturally exposed Ivi at Puuli. It establishes that DHHL is not a federal agency and that DHHL and the community's efforts to protect and steward Ivi kupuna at Puuli don't necessarily trigger other federal processes. It solidifies the understanding that DHHL was in full kuliana responsibility as the designated state actor, the steward Ivi kupuna exposed along the shoreline at, within those boundaries of Puuli. And that SHPD seeds the regulatory oversight in this matter. That was just a really, really quick, high-level overview of the projects we worked on. I'm sure those in the community, as well as the commission, might have questions. Please feel free to reach out to me. And we are just, for some of the community members that participated in the hua'aka'is out there and the many consultations, meetings we had over the past couple of years, we are planning on bringing a final hua'aka'ee back to Puuli to talk about this plan of action and everything that these projects and these documents entail before we wrap up this work. So please know that there's, there's more to come and it's not Paul yet. I'm sure you folks all have questions. So we're really looking forward to walking through that plan of action with the community to make sure you guys have the tools, resources, and support to continue to malama the kupuna at Puuli. Mahalo, Nui.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, the next person up, Stuart Matsonaga.
Aloha Chair and Commissioners, and mahalo to all those in the audience. I'm going to focus this discussion on the Ka'ou area. And starting with the pueo agricultural lots, this is part of PowerPoint for tomorrow's discussion with the Commission, item E1, but I'm going to shorten it to just Ka'ou. So in 1986, the department offered 25 pueo agricultural lots. 12 were awarded with no infrastructure. What has happened since then is that the commission has authorized up to $6 million for planning, design, and construction of the infrastructure in this location. So when we start the, the planning and the environmental assessment, then we'll be coming out to the community to have input into the environmental assessment. Right now, the Wa'ihino land as, as described by Planning Office is not conveyed to DHHL. So new lots are not possible at this time. It may be in the, in the future. Next slide, please. At Discovery Harbor, the department owns 40 scattered lots. Two leases are occupied. One lot is currently in recordation process to start building. And seven lots are in process for the financial and building permit process. So there are a net 30 lots available for new residential awards. Next slide, please. The Ka'ou water system, so this is the slide that you saw earlier from the Planning Office. If you go down South Point Road, you'll see the 100,000 gallon steel tank being constructed. We expect that we would be completed in December of this year. Simultaneously, Land Development Division is working on a, developing a filling station for the, the spigot that will be feeding off of that water line. Next slide, Currently, the, the county's water line goes through many of the 25 pastoral lots. And so the next phase will be addressing that. And if I can have the next slide. So we have been working on trying to improve the, the pressure at different pressure reducing stations that the County of Hawaii actually owns. These pressure reducing valves are located within private lots. And so we've been having difficulty in gaining access. And so we're trying to work with the county to actually move those outside of the private lots into, into the roadway. So that is still a challenge. And we continue to persevere on that one. And then the next slide is the future phases. I'm sure everyone's interested in this. This would relocate the existing water line from within the lots on South, to within the South Point Road right of way. We would also include the subdivision of the pastoral lots because right now, the lots were surveyed and leased, but there is no subdivision yet for these, for these lots. So we would install water laterals for water meters to each of the 25 pastoral lots. The estimated cost is $20 million. And this, we have proposed to the next legislature, this $20 million is in our sufficient sums package to the ledge to request this money. And that's all I have.
Yeah, at this time, we'd like to call up Jeff Kekoa to talk about the community, his community association's concerns.
Aloha, my name is Jeffrey Kekoa. Thank you guys for being here. I guess you guys wanted an update on what we're doing or more less. But anyway, we've been waiting for a long time for actually putting people on the land down there at South Point. What's holding everything up is the water. So I'm glad you guys are working on that right now. Not sure if there'll be enough to put more people on the land, which is, you know, especially the ag lands, because... There's about 7,000 people on the agriculture waitlist on Hawaii Island, 7,390, and maybe 2,022 on the pastoral waitlist. There's over 9,000 people waiting. And I just was wondering if maybe, you know, we can help, help people get off the list. Many times we come, years ago, we came to get on, to get on the land, to do ag, maybe even to do pastoral. I'm not on a pastoral list, but we're getting to the age where now we're more concerned about at least getting on the land, transferring it to our moipuna. Because we're getting old already. I mean, not sure how many more years we have left to do things. But anyway, we did like, Andrew mentioned, well, the girl was here, about, we did acquire some ag lands up in Alka Wa'ihino to do sustainable ag, right? And we did do the Wa'ihino ag proposal. And it was approved by the commission back in 2016. And we waited and we finally got it in 2022, which is like six years later. Got to go, got a chance to, I guess it's right of entry, is that what it's called? To go up there. But in the six years, the area got overgrown. So we're kind of in a, you know, a standstill right now until we can get some equipment up there to help us clear the land. We can do sustainable ag. And, you know, Paul here is, he can use this himself.
Thank you guys for being here. But as far as the project at the Wa'ihino lands are going, we really haven't got started. Like we got two meetings, went on a busy site with Selecting. But I know like, some of the members has also like registered with the La'opua project where they were making like some culture things and Papa and Oahu. I think our initial plan was to do like community guarding and try to get ka'ou on the property. I do some ka'ou growing. We need to like put up some of the huli, maybe 500 whenever we're ready to go. But I think right now we're in the process of finding out how many want to get involved. So I think the association need to regroup again because Jeff been out at the last meeting because he was all with COVID. We had other things going on that kind of like wasn't getting the association together. So I think maybe we're looking at a closer date sometime in January to get started as far as moving on the land, getting ka'ou into the ground. That's just a projected, projected date specifically sometime in January when the growing season starts. Right now, we're kind of close into the Makahiki season. We're starting to harvest. So when I harvest some of the taro that I got growing, I'll be more than gladly to share it out with the association. But I don't know that that's all we have like for the project of Wa'ihino. I know it's been a long process for me because like I was doing, I was going on DLNR land and doing some project like growing olive skulls, potatoes. But it took me like seven, 12 years to get it all legit where we can run to the land now with authorization. Back then, it was just doing a peaceful protest to show that our agency within the state can be done. And I think what we're talking about was water. I think we had lower mountain rain in the Kamaua district compared to Wa'ihino district. I saw we kind of went up high, high up into higher. But now, since the Hawaiian homes moved on to like supply water down at South Point, my personal feeling is that opening up the Kamaua ag lots is one of the things that was mentioned. Because then I think you give individuals a more chance to do something themselves. They're better doing it with an association. You'll have somebody accountable for what they've been doing instead of like having us guys meet and try to do a community. I've been on the waiting list for well over 35 years. Back in 1985, I went to visit, you know, you guys know like the nine, ninth city, Las Vegas. When I came back, I wasn't feeling like I belonged there. So I started this movement with the Hawaiian homes. And our side was trying to get people from the Hawaiian homes to come out to Ka'ou and register some of the people. That's how long I've been. So I've been on the waiting list well over 30. I have dependents, I have grandchildren, I have moipunas. I don't, I don't want them to be waiting for their award. I wish that you guys could expedite the process so I could be awarded and I could handle fire wars. But I think when we talk about all the people, call me Papa, my grandkids, our biggest, as individuals, but I know we need to work as a group. Because I think, you know, the place of interest was at Wa'ihino, the people of interest, the beneficiaries of the Hawaiian home back. The person of interest is going to be the people that show up, or that person individually. And I think overall, my goal is to try to produce poi. All those three things, the place of interest, people of interest, person of interest, want to get poi. Well, there's the taro league that we can supply for the rest. But that's, that's the main reason we kind of working on this ag project for well over 12. That's where we have to go.
We, we have worked with Noho Papa. Some of us met with the people that came down to try and manage Puuli better. Because I just talked to a guy just the other day. He said that he was fishing at South Point where we were at the polly. And there was dust all over there. But he didn't know what was going on. Then he found out that they were doing, I'm not sure if the map shows it, but they were doing donuts, right? On the side of pulley and they flipped their truck, some young, young people drunk. So that's the kind of stuff that we kind of want to stop and, you know, just to protect the area because it's pretty special place to people growing up in Ka'ou. You know, I wish we had time today to go, go in watch Puuli and Ala Hamo, but maybe next time, in a lot more time, in actually area and all the erosion that has happened. And also the change of the beach where a car came in and just covered the beach from the last storm we had, I think it was. But there's a lot of change in being done just by the weather itself, but which we can't predict or even try to prevent. But I, I'm sure we can prevent outsiders coming to Ka'ou and doing those crazy things with the off-road vehicles and that from stopping. My main concern was to get, Andrew had said, go presence down there with Hawaiian Home Department. Somehow come some kind of a purity or even, even just somebody down there just been an eye on things, you know, and maybe reporting things or something, getting, working with DLNR or the County of Hawaii Police Department. I know, well, my main concern was to try to help the almost 9,000 people on the ag and pastoral list, which is also lists that we all signed up for through the Department of Homeland, besides residential. Like I know, I know, I'm not sure who the guy was. He mentioned about the 300 acres of Wa'ihino that was acquired from DLNR. But there also is 262 acres of sustainable ag up there that's been in, part in Hawaiian homelands forever. And it's being leased to Rancho. We did approach DHHL back in, I think it was, I'm sure, 2012 or something, to acquire just the five acres and we got turned down by DHHL. That's why we went to DLNR. That's, and that's why DLNR transferred that 300 acres to the, to the partner. So kind of disappointing getting turned down by the people who were supposed to help us. But fortunately, the DLNR did approve us working with the department to acquire the five acres for our Wa'ihino Alpa ag project. And as far as things go, everything slowed down since COVID. So many of our, our members too, we're all getting older and busy in our lives. So kind of got smaller our group. that's smaller our group compared to when we first started, so. I just, I just don't want to talk too much because I want, I'm sure there's a lot more questions from people in the audience. Thank you guys.
We just want to thank the commissioners, yeah, that's an opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys like new, some of you guys. So I like to be solid, but had to have you on board, Kalae.
Thank you.
Hope we headed in the right direction.
Thank you very much, thank you gentlemen. Okay, we're going to now take public testimony on our agenda items. We have quite a few people signed up, so, you know, out of courtesy to, so that everybody can testify, if you can limit and do five minutes, that way we can get everybody on and everybody gets a chance to talk. So the first person up is Dean Kanijo.
Aloha commissioners, chairman, thank you for being here today in Kaua. Nice to see you folks there. I assume you guys did make you guys tour down to the south side. I bring my concerns about the south side, I'm a homesteader, about six, well, Kamaua, yeah. I've been there on the first awards. Me and my dad ranch down there with my brothers and with my sister as well as my, my kids right now. I thank you folks for giving us an ROE to continue ranching and raising cattle. But I bring my concerns today on what is actually going down in the south side area and it's South Point itself, Kalae. I'm a YouTuber. Bring them up on YouTube, you guys can see them. There's not much to say because you can see them. But on the YouTube, I seen something, it occurred. It's in Maui, Lanai, Molukai. It's a deer access problem. If you guys don't go on it, look at it. The DLNR is getting involved with it. The native people, the ranchers has an issue about access deer for the reasons of the overgrazing of the lands. The host mine is being destructive due to the runoff of the overgrazing. And the runoff that goes into the oceans and destroying the coastal area as well. We have it here. It's a public access problem. It's a public access that is not being controlled. For the last 10 years, meeting chairmans after chairmans as well as commissioners, an issue was brought up. Kali, you have inherited 10 years of past because they never done nothing, okay? It's nobody's fault here because you guys are a brand new staff. I get it. Our last chairman says, ho mananui. Eight terms, two terms he went. And I still ho mananui because nothing went happen. What do we take to make something happen? Andrew said you guys never had time to go down any further than what you guys did. I wish you guys could come a little bit more earlier, maybe another half an hour. He is cause the destruction is bad. The access deer is from an invasive animal. They cannot read. They don't know nothing about postos. This is man-made destruction. Man-made within our own community that has destructed the whole area already. But what is saving this right now from the outside destruction? These people with ROEs and ranchers around the area as well as farmers and gardeners are taking the time to fence the areas away from everybody else coming in. These lands are now being protected, although cattle might be running on them. But if you get good management, it's not an erosion problem. The destruction of South Side is during these weather conditions that we are right now on a drought situation. It jeopardize we as ranchers. There's no control on access, all backlands are being accessed to the public. And from all over our state of Hawaii and from all over the world are coming to Green Sands Beach. YouTube shows everything on Green Sands Beach. I plead with this commission as well, you chairman. We need help down here. Much help that you guys can give us with our plans, the regional plans. And the regional plans was stipulated prior to townscape. We were there with townscape, even all, manao. We addressed commissioners, we addressed chairman. The regional plan was put out in a book. They got paid thousands and thousands of dollars for a regional plan. Nothing happened. Hope chairman make the difference, that's all I can say. For the commissioners, make the difference, make it for the beneficiary, for our future beneficiaries. We are the Maupunas. Now, and my dad was here one time. But we got to say more for the kids, our grandchildren and their children as well. But it's a special place in South Side, in Kaua, it's a very special place and people really likes to see it. But please, by all means, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person to testify, David Kuhalani.
Hello guys, nice to see you guys again, my certificate, please call it last I see you like 15 years ago. Hello everybody, I'm here, the only reason I'm here for is for our people to get a land on Hawaiian homeland. It doesn't matter how big it is, we just need a piece of property to put up a house for our people of Kaua. We cannot afford these freaking $300,000 houses. Whoever came, you don't belong here, you rich, you're not here. The big issue here today, guys, is make sure our people get a place on land. That's another one thing for me to be here today. That's the most important part I got to say about things. And then we're going down to the South Point, land down, down there. I understand it's a very good place, it's a very important place, it's a very native place for everybody. We're talking about a management plan there, it's good and fine, I agree with that. But you guys go down there and then manage a place that you guys want to manage. Don't stop our people from coming down to the beach and go fishing. Don't stop our people from coming down to the beach and go camping. Ladies and gentlemen, this is where our kids learn how to swim. This is where our kids learn how to fish and eat and survive, if you guys talking about survival. Kaua is a special place, not only South Point, the whole district of Kaua itself is a special place for all of us that body in Kaua. Because this is the most important part, that's why I came to this. The rest of this is just a, just a makeup, just a repeat. I heard that story before. I just don't want you guys stopping our people to go down there to fish, stopping our people from going down there to learn things. If you want to protect that place, you guys say you guys want really protect, you go down there, you protect it. You don't follow the bad people that is destroying them. People down there just go in and out every single day. South Point is the last fishing village of Kaua. We get people fishing down there every single day, 24/7 in the night. We got people from all over the island. You can only handpick one side of the island, that's why it's called Hawaii, it's not South Point. That is my manao, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next testifier is Eileen Noho.
Welcome, I didn't want to speak, but I'll just say what I have to say. Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not Alicia, but my son is Alicia at South Point. He has that first pastoral that you guys awarded the people. Okay, so what that other guy was telling us about the water, so you guys had 6 million and that 6 million was just for South Point? That was, I mean, that amount of money, was it just for South Point?
What is the question, what is, what is answer, Stuart?
That's maybe it's just for South, 6 million.
Yeah, was that 6 million just for South Point?
Yes, that's correct, so that's in our current budget right now, it's allocated to Pu'uali.
Okay, so you're talking about just those 25 pastoral, pastoral.
Agricultural lots.
Agricultural lots, okay. So we, each, each lot is going to have their own meter?
That is the intention, yes.
Okay, and so nothing is coming out of our pocket, it's all coming from Hawaiian homes?
Correct, that is, the infrastructure is being funded by Hawaiian homelands through partially the legislature and then partially from our trust funds.
Okay, so my next question is this, you guys don't know how dry South Point is, yeah? Right now it is dry, I don't know if you guys know this, but why can't you guys work with the county to put at least one fire hydrant somewhere down South Point? So these firemen get water, I mean, when get fire down there, it's terrible and it's scary because of the wind and it just blows towards the houses. So can't you guys work with the county to get fire hydrants down there? So we don't need wait for them go up the road, go get watered and come back down the road. You know, you know, these ranchers, they, they're the one that is saving these, these people. Because they're coming on their own time, bulldozing the lots and just working hard for all these, for all these 25 pastoral lands, so. I mean, I don't know how that can happen, but would it be possible to have fire hydrants down there? Not only that, that water spigot for the 25 lots?
Right, that's a good point, that is the long-term plan to put in a county standard water system in South Point Road. Currently, the water line is this AC pipe that's inside of the lots. And so that would have to be moved outside into South Point Road and to install fire hydrant and that would be subject to the quantity of water that we can get from the county. So we, we have been working with the county, there was also a plan to try to install a dip tank close to Hawaiian homelands about, I think it was about halfway down. So that would be through some other funding and not from the HHL.
Yeah, I think that answers my question, thank you guys.
Good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next testifier, Kathy Hashimoto. Oh, he did, oh, okay. Thank you. The next person, Jerelyn Maderas. Jerelyn Maderas? How about Paul Makua Kani? You look familiar.
Yeah, thank you guys for being here, I guess, you know, I, I've been working, trying to get agriculture land, but right now I think the bigger picture for me is trying to get, like what I heard earlier in the presentation is that we're going to try to accelerate and get the lands out. So my testimony would be for you, to you guys is that try to make available the Kamaua lots that already has been drawn up on papers. And try to follow through with those plans so that we could get some agriculture leases out in Kaua so that the beneficiaries could move on the land as agricultural leases. I know we have pastoral leases down at South Point and throughout the rest of the lands that been available to the HHL, but no agriculture land has been given out as an awards in the district of Kaua. Just through the community that we've been trying to obtain these lands. And I think for, for reasons it's important because we don't have any like fresh supermarkets available in the district, so one of the things I wrote was, you know, making fresh fruits or available through people growing it. And I think by awarding the lands, this, this is a possibility to have more more veget, vegetation or vegetarian available than just through the pastoral, which the Department of Hawaiian Homes Land leases do probably provide. But I think, yeah, the residential lot as far as my concern, like, I know I've heard issues with the properties out in Discover Hub, but, you know, whoever applies for it going to have to deal with whatever the DHL standards. But I think would be a great opportunity if US commissioners look at as far as open up the Kamaua ag lots so that we could give more awards out to the beneficiaries of Kaua or of the state. And that's all I want to testify about.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to step up and testify? Now's the opportunity. We're all here, the commission, this commission, all the staff that can answer specific questions. Anybody? Okay. Well, then, come up.
Hello, I'm Dailene Vieira. My question is, as I was looking at this up here, is my question to, I know you folks are new and you guys got to get more, and I believe you folks should come more often to Kaua to see what's going on, stuff like that, yeah. My question to the new, new commissioners, as well as Kali, Noho Papa LLC. It's the kind, they're looking for search chip or pu'ualii and stuff like that. And of course, I understand you folks never reached pu'ualii, so you folks should have. But see, the thing is, on the historical site, I was very active in the Hawaiian historical site down at Kalae due to the Hawaiian Civic Club of Kaua in the past. But my question to Hawaiian Homes Land, why did you folks hire Noho Papa from Oahu and not hire a nonprofit organization here in Kaua? They never answer me, even she can, but that's what's my question. Noho Papa comes from Oahu.
Andrew.
Hawaiian Homes Land hired HO, hired them from Oahu. We have planning nonprofit organization here in Kaua. How come they weren't asked?
I guess to clarify, there are several staff from Noho Papa that are from Hawaii Island and they worked on the project. I know, I know they're not from Kaua.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
We do have to go through state procurement and the folks that submit to the department are who we have to select from. I think we have tried our best to reach out to Kaua community members through the process because we know, even though we have trained archaeologists to help us interpret the state historic preservation laws and the federal national American grave protection rights act that we have to comply with. While they have that expertise, I think they would be the first to acknowledge that they need to consult with folks from Kaua. And as we covered through our presentation, we tried to conduct several meetings with Kaua community members. We did start the project during the pandemic, so we did start our initial meetings virtually.
Yes, and I know I said in some of the Zoom meetings with Noho Papa and stuff like that. stuff like that, I was one of the kupuna that was asked to sit in. But the whole idea is, um, there's a lot of kupuna and a lot of, uh, organization here in Kaua that knows the history, like myself, knows the history of Kalai, South Point, all the way to Ka'alu'alu, all, you know, and, and further. So my question to all of you is, it's not only Pu'ualii that has the historical site, P now all the way to Ka'alu'alu, and it's all Hawaiian Homes Land. So they should further and not focus just on one thing.
I, I do agree that, um, there are numerous vahipana in South Point.
Oh, yeah, plenty.
And I thank you for your mana'o. I think as we, um, start to look at other vahipana in the future that we want to steward, um, we have to start somewhere. So we started with Pu'ualii, um, because from what we've seen, um, it is highly susceptible to, um, bad actors and off-road vehicles. So we had to start somewhere. Um, so we did start with Pu'ualii, doesn't mean that we're gonna stop at Pu'ualii, but, um, thank you for sharing with us that there are, um, many, many Kaua kupuna that can be of, um.
And one more thing I have to ask him, it's, uh, you talk about Kaua community, folks getting involved with the Kaua community. I'm very active in, stuff like that. But there are, there's not just only us or you folks passing a lot of kupuna that should be, you folks should, uh, talk to and stuff like, although some maybe hila hila, gonna shy, but, you know, folks not taking the time to get involved in a, when you say Kaua community, are you talking about only the, uh, what's called the home staters? Or are you talking the District of Kaua? That's, for me, that's the community, the whole district.
When, when we were working on the Pu'ualii work, um, we knew that, um, there are native Hawaiians outside of our beneficiary community that have a vested interest. Um, music, sorry to use, like, technical terms from the state historic preservation or sixe law, but we, we wanted to identify cultural descendants and lineal descendants from Kaua to help participate in the meeting. Obviously, we.
Obviously, you missed some.
Yeah, we missed some, but we have, we have to, I mean, we would like to, ideally, you know, we'd like to include everyone. Um, just know that we didn't, if we did not include mana'o, it wasn't on purpose, it was because we were trying to outreach the best we could, um, given the certain limitations we've had with contact information and getting the word out.
This is why we're looking at the commission, this is why you folks gotta get more involved in our district because, you know, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, we're the, we're always the last frontier that Hawaiian Homes at is Kaua. So, you know, don't forget us because we're here and we're here to stay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We do have another person that would like to test, testify, uh, Jason Masters?
Uh, good afternoon, so, uh, my name's Jason Masters, I'm here on behalf of the Kaua Community Development Plan Action Committee. Um, and so you talked about some of the steps they had done to have some kind of presence, I guess, down there, maybe with the police department or DLNR, et cetera. And so I was wondering if you had, maybe you just tried to reach out to the Kaua community to maybe hire somebody that could be like a resource officer, that could just be like a presence down at South Point? It doesn't have to actually be enforcement, but just to have somebody there in the meantime to say like, hey, you know, you're at Pu'ualii, you're burning rubber on top of the grave sites, you're, you know, people particularly not from Kaua do all kinds of crazy stuff down there, we see it every day, you know, the runoff, not only is it affecting the grave sites, it's affecting the coral reefs, um, but if there is just some kind of presence there, I don't know if your department has like resource officers, um, if that's such a thing, but, you know, maybe if it could be somebody from Kaua and not necessarily a police officer or an enforcement, um, aspect, but just to have some kind of official presence so that there is a presence, you know, even if it's just informational, you know, as the first step perhaps, so. I don't know if that's something you guys had considered.
Well, we do that in other areas, uh, I think it's a great suggestion. Maybe we can get your address and contact information?
I filled out my stuff. All right, thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, uh, I guess she's back in the audience, Eileen Nahua?
Oh, Jerelyn, sorry, sorry, Jerelyn.
Oh, Jerelyn. Oh, okay.
Um, good afternoon, um, Chairman Kali Watson and Commission members, my name is Jerelyn Maderas. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of my father Gilbert Maderas Jr., um, who resides on, um, Kamaua Kalai, uh, pastoral Hawaiian home, native Hawaiian home, pastoral lot, yeah? Um, I, I think I missed it, I think, um, that you guys already fulfilled the twenty-five B.C.s were gonna get water meters of their own?
We're working on that.
Yeah. Okay, um, that was my concern, yeah? Um, being that the department has gotten funded for this, uh, historically awaited water project, yeah? How long is it gonna be for, for them to get water? Being that my dad's been there for thirty-one years without his own water meter, yeah? Been a while, I mean, with the three-point-seven million dollars that the department got funded, um, and, um, we have to wait for fifteen more million dollars to get water, you know? It is like, um, it is hard, it is disheartening, yeah? To recognize that the water is not being for the people, it is bypassing the people and generating down to the green sand beach.
Hello, Commissioners, I apologize that I may not have introduced myself, uh, to the commission as well as to the audience. So I'm Stuart Matsonaga, I'm the Administrator for Land Development Division, mahalo'ava the question. So, um, the water tank is scheduled to be completed, um, by the end of the year. Currently, um, we're looking at different, uh, options for the filling station. We are also in, um, negotiation with the county on the, uh, quantity of water that the filling station's gonna provide. And the intention is to, um, equally divide it amongst the, uh, the twenty-five, um, lessees there. So, uh, I don't have a really good timetable yet, but in the coming year, we expect it to be, uh, provided. We may have to come back to the commission to articulate that plan, um, and, uh, get approval. Uh, typically, what happens in water systems is that, um, the commission has approved the, uh, water policy plan and admin rules may or may not have to be, uh, established for this, um, this water system, but we will definitely come back to the commission with a, uh, proposal, uh, for that.
Okay, um, that works.
And then you, you, excuse me, you might have, you asked about the, if additional funds are gonna be needed?
Um, it's, it states in the, um, SDR thirty, um, ST one twenty-twenty-one to the state legislature that, um, fifteen more million dollars is, um, needed to continue on with the phase three, which is the ending part, which every B.C. will have their own water meter, you need to subdivide the land in order for each one to have their own tax map key number, yeah? It's a ten-thousand acre property with twenty-five B.C.s, which I understand it needs to be subdivided to get our own, you know, water meters to provide to each pastoral lot.
Right, you are correct, yes.
And then it is upon County of Hawaii approval when funds become available. It has been thirty-one years long that, you know, how, I mean, like another thirty-one years for this fifteen more million dollars to go on, you know? It's not, is, it's not right.
My suggestion is we all work together with the, uh, legislature this coming session. Uh, it's important to, uh, communicate with Senator Kanuho's office because he's been, uh, supportive of this. So we all gotta work together and, uh, put it before, uh, the senator and, uh, the representative, uh, for this area and, uh, to really push for the funds because without the funds, we cannot, we cannot do anything. So that's, uh, my suggestion. It is in our current sufficient sums budget and I believe it's on the agenda tomorrow. And I would, uh, strongly, uh, say that you come before the commission to let your mana'o be known on that so that, um, it can be, um, prioritized accordingly because we have these requests statewide, we have a request for something like, um, I think a hundred-fifty million for, uh, purpose one, which is lot development and about two-hundred-fifty million for, uh, purpose four, which is repair and maintenance. So, um, we are trying to do what we can with, uh, with what we got.
Being the money, yeah, being the money that was spent, it is a lot of money, I understand that, but the water line was already there, you know, nineteen thirty-three, the Air Force military, uh, you know, air, uh, Morse Field, Air Force Base down there, water wasn't important, it was few, but the water is being already generated down there into the fuel tank that is spitting out on the ground. It's not fair with the money that's already been spent on this project. I understand it takes a lot of implementing, you know, funding resources and stuff like that, but just knowing that the water is spitting out on the ground is, is already generating water down there, you know, and it's already passing the pastoral people that's there.
That, that actually is a really good point.
Yeah.
That's something I just, uh, found out about recently regarding this excess water that's being wasted. So, uh, we are gonna try and pursue converting that and accessing that, uh, extra water that's just being disposed of needlessly. Um, that is where the community, uh, can come in and kind of stand, or stand with us when we go after that.
Right.
And we're gonna be working and we, in, um, discussions with the Department of Water Supply, also working with the, uh, mayor, uh, we, they're wanting to do joint projects with us in various parts of this island. Uh, water has been a real, real challenge, uh, even in, uh, other areas like La'opua, we, we, you know, we're having to negotiate and we got some money from the legislature to fund a, uh, a water source that is gonna allow us to do four-hundred new homesteads in the La'opua projects, villages one and two. Uh, we also brought on some people to access some of the federal funds. So, uh, that's also another source that we're trying to tap into. There's billions of dollars, uh, in that, set aside for infrastructure that actually goes to waste. So fortunately, uh, this, uh, current administration, both HUD and the Department of Interior has visi- have visited, uh, with the department and we're trying to work with them as well as our congressional delegation to access, uh, these, uh, it, it's kind of an opportune time right now to go after these funds. So I assure you that we're gonna, and your, your area's on the list where there is a priority, so we're gonna, we're gonna try and get you some money.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I'm back again, I have one more question. So you know that, that tank, so he was talking about a spigot? So if that spigot is open to the public, anybody can stop at that spigot and get water?
Sir, why don't you just sit over there, man? Okay, don't put your name on that seat over there, man.
Good question, the answer is no to the public, this is for Hawaiian.
So how you guys gonna control them though?
Yeah, we have to secure that area, it's, uh, there's gonna be a fence around the water tank itself and then a fence surrounding the filling station.
Okay, so that.
So we're gonna have locks and some security measures so that only, um, the lessees can access, so, um, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be easy, it's gonna be tricky, you know, um, how, how we do that, but that is the intention and I think we're gonna need, uh, koko'a from all the lessees there. And then, so before that, we'll be coming out again to, uh, discuss that and how we, um, best can manage, because, you know, it's out here and, uh, you know, staff cannot be out here, um, hiring someone is gonna be expensive, um, you know, in, in addition to all the security issues too, so, uh, but, uh, we're gonna try to do something, uh, practical, um, you know, it's not like there's gonna be millions of gallons a day, so that's not the expectation and we don't wanna mislead anyone.
Yeah, so hopefully the public understands that this spigot is for the twenty-five lots, yeah?
Yeah, we're gonna put signs all over that.
I mean, because you get people coming from all over this island, they going to the beach, they going camping, now they go to Wahehino Park, they go get free water, then they go to South Point, they go camp, they do their fishing, their tank is filled. So now they're gonna take, oh, I don't need go Wahehino Park, I going to South Point, yeah, and spigot over there. So how you guys gonna control this? Yeah.
Good question, are you available?
No. I'm ready to retire, but I'm not available, no.
Don't talk about retirement.
Yeah, get, get her address too.
No, uh, this water issue is so much on my mind because Dean's dad is my father-in-law and I don't think you guys was on the commission when he went down there many of times trying to get water for South Point, try, I'm not only for him, for this twenty-five acres, he tried his best and now he's not here to look at what, I mean, you know, I don't know if it was you guys that went, okay, this thing, or was the last chair, you know, commissioner or the chairperson, but he tried his heart out to get water. So I, I mean, you know, for us, I'm happy because our house gonna get water, we're gonna have our own meter and we don't have to worry, yeah? But how many years it took for us to get that? Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Shall I stay, chair?
Just stay there. Now, I'd like to, uh, one, okay, one last, uh, witness.
You'll talk about water? Call my, okay, mahalo'. Um, sorry, everything running late, I know you guys busy, but, um, I wanted to bring two things up because there were supposed to be two egg lessees who were supposed to attend this meeting, they asked, a lot of times they ask me questions that I don't have answers to and I told them today was the best day to come because have you guys here to at least point them in the direction on who to ask or, um, how to get the information they need, right? But anyway, who of them are egg lessees down Pooa, um, off of South Point Road? And not just the water stops them from going on the land, but there's no road, there's no access. There's, um, I wanted to show you guys, but I kind of forgot when we went down, I, I did point it out to Cooley and Andrew that the place where the entry to the beginning of those egg lots, actually, two of my cousins are, are lessees on each side. And in order to put a road there, the county water line runs right alongside Hawaiian homelands, right alongside the egg lands. So cannot really drive over it without possibly breaking the line. I think it's, it's, uh, I'm not sure what kind of line it is, might be an asbestos line or a cement line or whatever they call it, older lines, but I was just wondering maybe if the department could, maybe use, use some of your, uh, monies or whatever you guys can get to try and look into that. And they told me if, if they had access, they would go on their land and at least go clear it by hand or something, you know, their egg lands, at, at least they can be on their land because there, there are lots of kind of river, well, two of cousins was right there next to the highway and then this other, this other woman that I know, she got her mom's lease, so she said it's like lot number six or seven, which is not too far in. Because I'm not sure the lots are, um, numbered on each side of the road, right? So they asked me, you know, so I told them to come, but they didn't, I, I was looking for them, they didn't show up, so I just thought I'd ask if, if there's a possibility to put a road over that line so they could at least go to access to their lot.
Stuart.
Uncle, you're right.
Yeah.
I should have stayed. So what we have, uh, planned. So what we have planned there, and we've already, we've taken a look at it, and there is county water line. There's also a pressure-reducing valve, kind of in, right around the, the drive, where the driveway would be, or where the road would be. So we have to relocate that, that valve, and to relocate it above the road. Okay, and so there's, you know, one of the challenges we're gonna face on this is that we have 25 lots, we have 12 lessees that are kind of scattered through there, and it's gonna be real difficult to construct the road to, you know, to all of the lessees. So what we're gonna do is, is approach the community, and, you know, we need to talk about possibly moving the lessees to the front portion of the subdivision, so that we wouldn't have to, let's say, construct the entire road right now, because I don't know if 6 million is gonna be enough to do that for the roadway, to bring in the water, and to bring in electrical utility. So that's an idea that we really gotta talk to the lessees there, and we'll need to work with our homestead services division to identify who the 12 are, and then set up a community meeting, because we would have to also do a chapter 343 environmental assessment for that, for this project. So we're willing to work with you and the lessees there and communicate and try to find out the mana'o of the 12 who are, who are there.
I know, I know in the department's website, they mentioned 17 awarded lessees, but they got awarded back in the 80s, and nobody's on the land, not one of them yet. So it's kind of unfortunate that, I, I know that some did pass already, maybe three of them passed, and...
You know what, Jeff, maybe you guys can talk after this?
Yeah, we will.
Talk more and can move forward on that.
I just, I just wanted to ask one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
What is Act 279?
That's the 600 million we got for...
Does, does that take care of infrastructure?
Sorry, most of it is going to infrastructure.
For residential lots?
For people that are taken off the waitlist, not existing lessees.
What about infrastructure for residential lots and stuff?
No, not, not just residential, ag and pastoral also.
But I was just wondering, because is, is there any Act 279 money to help the less, I mean, the, when you guys awarded residential lots in Discovery Harbor, the lots weren't even cleared for the, for the people. They just cleared like enough for the whole spend, but then a lot of them said that now they gotta go look for money to clear the rest of the lot, which is, I'm not sure how big the lots were, maybe half acre or what, or more, yeah, in Discovery Harbor. So a lot of them kept asking me questions, and I kept telling them I didn't have answers, and they didn't have any way to ask people, because they go on the website and get stuck. But anyway, I was just wondering if that's, that could be part of the 279 act, as far as infrastructure, clearing the land for them.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. Unfortunately, the way the, that particular Act 279 was passed, the legislature is mandating that we use it to do whatever needs to be done to take people off the waitlist. But we, you know, we're accessing other funds to deal with CIP funds, like it's gonna be in our budget this coming session to go for funds on that.
So like clearing the lots for the guys who are awarded is not part of putting them on the land?
No, I mean, like Stuart is saying, this, this, I mean, it's not just Ka'ua, it's, you know, homesteads, we got 43 homesteads throughout the state, so every, everybody, you know, they all got their needs, so we kind of work.
Because I cruise, I cruise, I cruise La'opua, and I see that lots beautiful.
Yeah.
Not one, we going in the, in the lots. I mean, they, they compact gravel, and, I mean, it's just beautiful, and you go to Discovery Harbor, and all you, all you see is bushes, and how come they get that and they get money spent? Is it maybe a political move that they have more people, political backing from their senators or what? I'm not sure. So Ka'ua is always like left out, we're like the farthest place from Kapolei, like I had mentioned, and we're, we're like either underserved or unserved district, you know, which is kind of, we've been living with that forever with all the state and county departments and federal, with our roads and schools, our hospitals. I just kind of wish Hawaiian Home would be one of them that would be underserving Ka'ua. And, I mean, it's only 40 lots compared to Kapolei that puts in hundreds of lots. I mean, 40 lots, that's already there. You don't have to do nothing but just clear the land. But anyway, and then I just wanted to ask, so how much of Act 279 funds is coming to Ka'ua?
The strategic plan did not identify Act 279 funds in, in Ka'ua.
So nothing?
So the strategic plan was developed about a year and a half ago. It was authorized by the legislature, the strategic plan itself was approved by the commission. Right now, for Hawaii Island, we have Act 279 funds in Honomu and in La'opua. Those were the, the areas where, at that point in time is when the commission approved, approved that plan. That doesn't mean that the commission can revisit the plan, and I, I do know that Chair Watson is preparing to go to the legislature to request additional funds, because we've been successful so far in encumbering over 200 million of the 600, and we're preparing for another 175 million to encumber in contracts.
So, so the legislature approves it?
The legislature approved...
Whatever the money was.
Yeah, passed Act 279 in 2022. And again, I would suggest that any of these projects that are important to the community work with the area legislators, so that they can push to put it into the budget specifically for the project you want. And then that way, once, if it is appropriated, then, then the department will implement.
I guess, I guess.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk more.
I get it is, it is political.
It is, it is the reality of the legislature appropriating the funds to DHHL. And so we all, I think all of the communities are, are in there lobbying with the legislature for their projects, so I would say continue to do it.
Can I ask you one more question? How much of 279 money is coming to Ka'ua?
Currently, nothing.
Nothing. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. We are meeting tomorrow, the commission, at the Grand Nani Loa Sandalwood Room, starting at 9:30 a.m. So those that are interested in coming, please join us there. The meeting will also be livestreamed on our website, and so, again, thank you for coming tonight. Meeting is adjourned.